Alright guys, it is 5:30 and I'm gonna call this meeting of the Steenville City Council to order. I'm gonna start off with Ms. Smith leading us off in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor to Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the unique Texas, one sacred under God, one indivisible.
Okay, Matty. Alright, now I'd ask Brian Davis with Solid Rock Baptist Church to go up to the podium and lead us in prayer, please.
Father, gracious Father, we just come here tonight, Father, to honor you and Father, to lift you up. Father, did all these proceedings tonight that we do would be in honesty and loyalty and glory to you. Bring honor to you, all the decisions we make about our city and all decisions that will be talked about tonight. Father, would you just proceed over those and may your will be done in all that we do, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Alright guys, y'all are gonna have to listen to me read for a little bit here, so I apologize in advance to that. Alright, we're gonna start off with a proclamation for City of Steenville Fire Prevention Week.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Please, sir.
Well, I've got some folks with me here. We've gotta be led. I'll just stand right up front, you don't have to come back, there you go, that's fine, right up front. Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, thank you for this time tonight that we can speak to you about Fire Prevention Week. I gotta start off by saying I'm very excited by the turnout we've got for our Fire Prevention Week proclamation. I'd like to thank everybody.
Flank we downed it or something.
Beautiful. So I'm flanked tonight with our Prevention Division, our Fire Marshal Division Chief Greg Schumpf, Assistant Fire Marshal Brandon Lockenhour, and Sparky the Fire Dog. Sparky's known throughout the land as a prevention specialist. But this is the heartbeat of life safety in Steenville for all of our residents and visitors. These gentlemen will visit over 250 addresses this year alone, some of them multiple times to assure compliance and that everything is going to right with our development and annual inspections. They also have outreach programs that they run in all the elementary schools to do public education for our children. Chief Schumpf and I had a vote earlier and it was unanimous that we were gonna let Assistant Fire Marshal Lockenhour get up and tell you a little bit about Fire Prevention Week, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon Lockenhour.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. October's a pretty big month for us, it's, today marks the start of Fire Prevention Month and within it is Fire Prevention Week. And so each year, the week of October 9th, President proclaims that it's Fire Prevention Week to commemorate the great Chicago fire of 1871, which killed over 250 people and left 100,000 people homeless. And so with that, the National Fire Protection Association adopts and selects an annual theme. And so this year's theme to be celebrated is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You." And so we are trying to really embrace that and push it and engage the community to recognize the importance of having worked, working smoke alarms in your home, so make sure that you test them monthly, replace the batteries at least once a year, and then if they're over 10 years old, it's probably time to replace them, they're outside of the range. And so I wanted, I wanted to kinda point out some statistics on this, so three out of five home fire deaths occur in houses that do not have working smoke alarms. So just installing working smoke alarms can increase your chances of survival by over half. So it's, it's a big deal, we really wanna see it in there. So this, this month, we partnered with United Way to do a smoke detector drive to raise money and get donations for smoke detectors. And so we're hoping to get 500 smoke detectors and that'll be our, our first push into installing working smoke alarms in all homes in Steenville. So we're gonna work on that and then next month, we're gonna work on installing them. And then I wanted to announce a really cool thing we're doing this year. On October 8th, from 5:30 to 7, we're partnering with Domino's Pizza to deliver pizzas with them. And so we'll, you have to call them, so call Domino's number. When you order your pizza, they, if you're selected, they'll ask you, hey, do you mind if your pizza's delivered in a fire truck? And so we'll come, we'll come to your house with, with the Domino's person and when we get to your house, we'll ask you if we can check your smoke alarms. And if your smoke alarms work, Domino's is gonna cover the cost of your pizza.
Wow.
So that's, that's really cool. If they, if they don't work, we're gonna, we're gonna use that time to educate and install smoke detectors and make sure that one more home has working smoke alarms in it. So it's, it's a really cool thing. If you haven't seen downtown, we hung the annual fire prevention banner. We wanna give a big shout out to David Kinkannon and State Farm for donating that to us so that we could hang it up. So I think it's really cool through these partnerships and everything, we can really, really push this and show the importance of having working smoke alarms in all homes in Steenville.
Thanks, Brandon. Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, if Doug was here, he'd say he remembered the fire of 1871 in Chicago. Every councilman actually remember it well, so.
He started it.
Well guys, thank you. So I'm gonna read this proclamation for the City of Steenville Fire Prevention Week. So it says, "Whereas the safety and well-being of our community are of the utmost importance and fire prevention plays a critical role in ensuring the protection of lives and property, and whereas the Steenville Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the risk of fires in homes through prevention and education, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association has designated October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week with the theme 'Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You', emphasizing the importance of installing and maintaining working smoke alarms in every home, and whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes that had no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. And whereas smoke alarms play a critical role in early fire detection, providing precious seconds for residents to escape and call for help. And whereas it is vital to educate our community on the importance of testing smoke alarms monthly, replacing batteries when necessary, and ensuring that smoke alarms are installed in sleeping, in every sleeping area, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas fire prevention and education are crucial for the safety of our community and Fire Prevention Week offers an opportunity to raise awareness about simple, yet lifesaving actions that can help protect lives and property. Now, therefore, I, David Basket, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Steenville, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through October 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. And the City of Steenville and I encourage residents to take responsibility for the safety of their families by ensuring that their smoke alarms are functioning properly and that everyone makes them work for you." Thank you. Did y'all see how well Sparky was trained? I said shake and he shook right away. Alright guys, I got one more proclamation. Do we have anybody with this or for the Teachers' Day proclamation? Okay, perfect. Alright, so this'll be the, there's some, there's some former teachers in the audience, anyone wanna get up? See how it feels to be called out in class? I knew, I knew one day I'd get back at you, right there. Alright, sorry. "Whereas the City of Steenville future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our Steenville teachers deserve our continued support, respect, and admiration, and whereas we proudly lead in demonstrating to our community to recognize and support our teachers and educating the children of this community. And whereas #TeachersCan is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Steenville joins #TeachersCan and is partnering entities across Texas and celebrating the inaugural Texas Teachers' Day and proclaims October 5th, 2024, to be Steenville Teachers' Day. And be it further resolved that the Steenville City Council encourages members of the community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses this week of October 5th as a symbol of support for our educators." Truer words haven't been spoken, we owe a lot to our teachers, they, see, they, they hold an impact on you throughout your entire life. So definitely thank you for our, our teachers. I'm gonna bring up Neely Carter. Neely, if you want to go up to the podium and do your presentation, please, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, and all you wonderful folks here in the City of Steenville, it's exciting to be able to celebrate kids in our town who do amazing things. And if you guys don't know Cameron Arnick, this kid is doing amazing things. So Cameron is nine years old and he is being presented today with the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, Region Four Male Athlete of the Year. Now, let me give you a little bit of context of what this means. Region Four is one of the largest regions of summer track in the entire state. There are 23 cities in the DFW area, in the metroplex area, who are represented in, in Region Four. And Cameron, out of 46 track teams and almost 2,000 runners, Cameron was selected as the Male Athlete of the Year. So give it up for Cameron Arnick.
Hold on, we have something else for you too, y'all stay right there. Alright, we have a certificate, a certificate here for you for being the 2024 TAF Male Athlete of the Year. Got a nice little Steenville lookout pin for you too, you can share that with all your friends, they'll be jealous. Congratulations.
Good job, Cameron.
Alright guys, we're gonna move on to, actually, so right now in the meetings when we have our citizens' general discussion, since all of the forms filled out all pertain to the same document or same items, I'm gonna go ahead and move that, let's get through the regular agenda items and then we'll move forward with these, these requests. First agenda item would be the Consider Approval Professional Planning Services for an Airport Layout Plan. Mr. Brown, if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us the scoop on that, please, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, in an effort to move forward with the runway extension project at the Steenville Clark Regional Airport, the city needed to update its airport layout plan with the narrative. We went out to bid for this service and received a single bid from KSA Engineering with these professional services. A selection committee consisted of the Airport Manager Sean Clemmons and the Airport Advisory Board Chairman Hardy Hampton, overseen by our Purchasing Manager Rebecca Crosson, reviewed the proposal, and then we are now asking the council to accept our recommendation for the city to enter into negotiations with KSA for these professional planning services. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? This is your, your area, Brandon, you need, you got anything you like it?
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Alright, well, this has been a long time coming, thank you so much for doing this, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Professional Planning, Planning Services as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the city entered into negotiations with KSA for professional planning services for our airport layout plan update with narrative.
Alright, I got a motion from Brandon and a second from Lynn. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is gonna be Consider Approval of the Mod Motel Fence Request. Mr. Bonner?
Yes.
Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Hey, if you wouldn't mind walking up to the podium here. I'm gonna give a little report on this real fast and we'll ask you, when I open the area for questions here. So Mr. Bonner, who has built the, the new Interstate Inn, Mod Motel, and Seeker, is requesting a permission to put a fence up on the backside of your property where the air conditioners lie, that would be on Airport Road.
Yes, sir.
I believe. That is in our city easement area. That is not something that we typically do, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to come up and, and speak and tell us why it's important to you and what it means to your project.
Exactly, well, we've spent a couple of years preparing this project for everybody in the city and our main goal is that everything looks great. And a lot of you, I'm sure, have seen what we're doing on the corner. When we projected what we wanted to do with the rooms, we didn't want the old-fashioned PTAC air cond- When we projected what we wanted to do with the rooms, we didn't want the old-fashioned PTAC air conditioners, you know, the old motel. So we wanted it, we wanted to put split units so that every room had air conditioning that you could control. When you do that, you end up with a condensing unit on the back of the building. Well, we kind of failed to foresee what it was gonna look like. So when we did it, we put them all up within two days, you know, we installed them. And then I think the first morning I came in, it was like, that does not look good. So we consulted our landscape architect, which is Kevin Ford, and we all sat and talked about it. And it's also a security issue, just because anybody could pull up there and cut one loose and be gone with it. And that scares me a lot, although I've had absolutely zero problem in the two years that I've been doing this project. So we started talking about, you know, how we could make it look good. And the only way that we can really make it look good for Airport Road, which heads right to the airport, is to put a six-foot-tall board-on-board cedar fence. And that's what we're requesting to do. Like I said, we've consulted with different things. We were gonna talk about putting cages that looked good and then we couldn't make that work. And then our landscape architect said, well, we could, we could, you know, we could do landscaping, but that's gonna be nothing but a problem with weeds and grass and constant upkeep-type situation. And as you come into town on 281, a lot of you have seen our new sign, the Interstate Sign. And that's the first thing you see when you come into town and you see our project. And we have, we have really worked hard to make this project look good for the city. And we want to do this so that when you turn right on Airport Road, that it looks great. And that's what this, that's what we're requesting to do. I've consulted with Cole Bramlett, who does fencing here in town. He took me around, he showed me different projects that he's done in town of that type of fencing. And we only want to take it to the height of the units, which is right at just a little bit below six foot. And he does beautiful work and it's, you know, it's an expensive thing for us to do. But we want to finalize our project and make it look good. We're two months from opening. We're gonna try to open December the 15th and that's, that's a bold. That's, you know, that's what we're shooting for. And, and we want to get all this in and done in these next two months as we press forward as fast as we can. And we know that by doing that, this will be something that long-term will always look good for us, for our project that we've worked on so hard and also for the city. You want to turn right and go to the airports, you don't want to look at 16 condensing units. And I don't think myself or any of us foresaw that it was gonna be unattractive like that. And because we have tried to come up with alternative options, nothing works except a fence that looks, that would make it look good. And that's what, that's what we're requesting.
Any questions for Mr. Bonner?
Mr. Bonner?
Yes, sir.
The location of the fence, how close will that be to the, to the road, the easement? How much of the easement is required?
It'll be half of it. It'll come right down. I have to stay so many inches away from the back of the condensing units. So we're gonna go right down through the center of the easement. You'll still have a portion, half of it will still be out. So I'm gonna go right down the center. I could push out a little bit if we needed to. I don't want to push out any more than I need to. Security-wise, I want to be able to come in from both ends and be able to maintain them and, and certainly to keep theft from happening. We don't think it's gonna happen, but it certainly could. So it would be basically, it can be anywhere, but our, our optimal is to go right down the center, which the, the AC units are away from, you know, they're so far away from the building and we have to stay a good another foot away from them, so it's about.
And how many feet is there between the building and the pavement?
Six, I believe.
Okay, so you're talking about taking three feet, using three feet?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I want to
Yes, sir.
We've used the term easement. I want to make it clear, this is not an easement.
Right away.
It is the public right-of-way land owned by the city. So I would also encourage you to think about, he may build a fence on it, but then if you, if you want to consider doing this, there are some things that we need to line out. Who's gonna take care of it? Who's legally responsible if somebody runs into it? There's a whole laundry list of things why our rules are written the way they are. And it is more common than you think that we get requests to build on or across the public right-of-way. And Mr. Thomas could probably speak more to precedents and things like that.
And, and if we approve this, can we approve it with the understanding that Mr. Bonner is to repair any damages done to the fence if something happens to it? And that we have access when needed?
I have absolutely no problem with that.
You can. Again, and I said the staff's always gonna advise you not to do this. It is a, there's a reason you guys wrote the rules the way you did, not to allow private structures built on public right-of-way. And it is no reflection on Mr. Bonner, he's building an outstanding product and it has been a fantastic partner. It's just simply the way we structure the rules for the public right-of-way all across the city. And again, it is more common than you think that, that we do get requests that, hey, you know, I want to build a fence this way or whatever that may be.
You said something about liability.
Yeah.
I need, let's talk about that.
It didn't ring, you can speak better than that, but you know, if somebody runs into it and gets hurt.
It's liable.
Who's?
It could cause some possible liability, yes.
To the city?
Yes. Well, if you allow, yes.
But if the fence isn't there, they're gonna run into a motel guest.
No.
I understand that.
So, I know, I know that wouldn't be our fault, but you know, I, I think we gotta look at both sides of it as well.
How far does that right-of-way extend?
It, it's almost right to his building line.
The length of it is 200 feet.
Yeah, but I mean.
But I mean, no, the, the right-of-way extends almost to the
To the building?
line, to the back of his building.
Really?
It's, as soon as you turn right on Airport Road, it's that strip right there.
And understand, if, if that was a new build today, it almost
It wouldn't be allowed.
No, you couldn't build that building in that spot with current setbacks and things like that. That's just the way it was back then. So I, I mean, it's a tough situation. I admit that. It's just when you look at it from the kind of overall viewpoint.
Well, in effect, the air conditioners are sitting out over the right-of-way.
No, I don't think so. The way you described it, I have, I have not seen the dimensions set out, but I, I can't be for sure. It doesn't sound like it.
I did take a picture while ago on my phone just as I drove off. And I'd be happy to show you. I mean, and you can see, we attached the, the condensing units right to the building. They're not attached to the building, they're on brackets, but they're within, we brought them right to the building. And we purchased as small a units as we could, but we want, we've put a lot into the project so that it's a very comfortable, you know, place to stay and, and so we, you know, we wanted to do it the right way.
So they're not on the ground?
Oh, no, no, they're attached up high. They're right below the, they're right below the soffit, right below the eve. We, we put them as high as we possibly could. That building, that building's low anyway, you know, it's been there since the mid-sixties.
And the, and the fact that the fence is gonna be six feet tall, that will cover them?
Yeah, it'll be right to the top of it. That's a real low roof line right there. If y'all ever been to the airport, look to the left. So we, our goal was to get it up as high as we could and, and to leave as least exposure of the, of the, you know, the lines that come out there, the line sets that feed it. You don't see any of that. We worked real hard, so you don't see anything. For, for us, it's all about finishing off what we've spent two hard years to make beautiful for the city of Steenville. And that's, and of course, it's for us too. We, we're very proud of what we've done. And that's where we're trying to finish this project off. It's never gonna be, if we don't, are not able to do it, it's never gonna be attractive to turn right and head to the airport. And it's always gonna be the first thing you see when you come to that sign at 281. You're gonna look over and you're gonna see 16 condensing units way up high, right under the eve. And they're under the eve. The water actually goes over it, so. And we guttered it too, so we could control that. We've already guttered it.
So how far out from the actual building will the fence be? Three feet? Is that what you're saying?
About from out from the building, the, the air conditioners are out 20, you know, from the, I think they're 26 inches. And then it'll, we have to stay another foot away. So it'll be about three feet away from the building. And then there's a buffer zone of about three feet. But the AC unit, the condensing units are up right underneath the eve. And like I said, I do have a picture if anybody wants to see it.
So the right-of-way is six feet? Is that correct?
I don't think, it's all the way to the back.
It might be a little bit bigger than that.
So our, our AC units are overhanging into the, into the right-of-way?
In the air. Guys, you, you know what our advice is? You, whatever, whatever the council's pleasure.
Any other questions for Mr. Bonner? Yes, sir.
Did y'all, when you surveyed the property, were you aware of where the building was in relationship to the right-of-way at that time?
Oh, yes. I mean, you know, we had our surveys done and we certainly knew where the property line was. Like you were saying earlier, you couldn't, you know, it was built in 65, so just rehabbing what was there. So yes, we knew where the property line was.
Were there other options for AC units that could have been roof-mounted or other?
No, well, you could have, you could have roof-mounted them. That would have been a gigantic mess. And so the option was, the, the decision was made to do the splits. And you know, sometimes there's so much going on between the restaurant planning and then the motel planning. You know, we kind of, sometimes it's hard to see exactly. I mean, I certainly knew what they were gonna look like, but until you actually see them on the wall and you say, oh, that's not very attractive, that's kind of the way that came about. So our goal was to make it attractive. That's our goal, so.
Okay. Mr. King? If you, if you allow building a fence or any other structure in the right-of-way, what are the potential hazards in the future should you desire to repave or, or repair or do maintenance, routine things that happen to streets? Would that not, could that not be an issue with equipment operation and perhaps be in the way to do that?
I don't necessarily think that would be the case in, in this scenario. I don't, Nick, I don't foresee.
You can't put a sidewalk in there.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. But the, but the liability for anything that happens to that fence, whether it's pedestrian or vehicular rated, falls to the city because it is in the city right-of-way.
It opens us up to that, yes.
And even if he agrees to do the maintenance on it, and if it, if there are issues with it, he could repair it, but that does not relieve us of the potential liability. Am I understanding that right, Mr. Thomas?
You are.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Bonner? It's a pleasure with the council.
Mayor Protem, I would make a motion to deny the request to build a fence along the back of the building on Airport Road.
Second.
I have a motion from Ellen to deny and a second from Brandon. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
No, what you voting on is to deny.
Correct. Alright, so we had one no vote from Gerald. Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Yeah.
Alright, next agenda item. Nick, if you'd be so kind to come up and handle the next three agenda items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem, Council. On August 6th, 2024, the council approved the abandonment of the water meter infrastructure, water infrastructure inside the Creekside Apartment Complex and then supported the purchase of a master meter and vault for that complex. And we're simply coming to you tonight for a request to make that purchase. Now that purchase was requested and approved inside the new fiscal year budget. The quote that we had in the budget was $60,000. That was based upon a quote from Aquametric, which is the city's sole supplier for water meters inside the city. And you can see here, they've agreed to honor their quote at $59,108. That's a savings of just over $890.
Any questions for Nick?
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the meter and the vault, vault that it goes in.
Second.
I have a motion from Ellen and a second from Gerald. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, the next item is a proposal that we received from Maguire Iron to install the logo, the new logo on the 377 Elevated Water Storage Tank. Maguire Iron was the contractor that helped us with the repair rehab of that tower in 2023. They did an outstanding job and they have sent us a proposal from TIPS, the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System, to perform and provide that logo. And I provided some renderings inside the council packet, so you could see what that would look like. The requested amount was approved in the budget at exactly $48,000. That's exactly their proposal. And they have asked for 180 days to complete that just because the painting is so weather-dependent. Although I think once they get started, they'll be done within a couple of weeks.
Any questions for Nick? It's a pleasure with the council.
I make a motion that we approve the bid for $48,000 for the water storage tank mural. Second.
Motion from Marion, a second from Leanne. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
One more.
Okay, last one. Yes, sir. The fiscal year 2425 budget also included a pump motor and base plate at the Lilian Pump Station. This is the third and final pump at the station as it was originally designed. We had in the budget $49,525 set aside for this capital item that was approved. The quote that we got back from Odessa Pumps and Equipment is $47,100 and that is a positive savings of $2,425. They have given us a 16-week lead time on this piece of equipment and we are simply requesting to make that purchase.
Any questions for Nick? It's a pleasure with the council.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase from Odessa Pumps and Equipment for the pump motor base plate unit at the Lilian Pump Station.
We got a first from Ellen, a second from Leanne. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, what did y'all come for? Alright, so agenda items number six, seven, eight. Rocky Creek Property Number One LLC has requested to remove their request for this project. If they choose to ever come back and re-entertain this, they will have to go through the process again from the beginning. So if y'all still want to talk, y'all can. Yes, ma'am, Doris. If you come up here.
I don't want to just talk, I promise. I'm Doris Howe. I do would like to know what will happen to the variances that were awarded to that piece of property since?
I believe we're, we have to start completely over, so there's, it's not there at all.
So that would be null and void. Okay, that's all I want. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else want to speak before we close this, this manner? Alright, thank y'all.
You probably don't even, you probably don't even remember me. Remember you from the boat.
I thought maybe that I had to jump over.
Did you know you've got a lot cooking outside? Is it just a bulb in your place? I've got ladders. I've got ladders.
Yes, ma'am. That was my suggestion, but I thought it. That's what it sounded to me. That's a drinking problem.
Where'd everybody go? Hey, there's our, there's our regulars now, all right. Steve, if you wouldn't mind coming up and, uh, going over, uh, the first one there, number ten, please, sir. No, no, I apologize.
Nine.
I believe that's going to be Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Council, thank you. This is going to be applicant Matt Copeland representing Barefoot Equity Partners LLC. He's requesting a rezone of property located nine sixty-one Clinton. This is in the kite second edition, block one and two, lot one B and eleven B. And then also city addition, block ninety-nine, lot one D. They're asking to rezone this from R-one, single-family residential to R-two point five, which is our integrated housing district. Planning and zoning commission convened on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the city council approve this rezone request. And just to provide you a little background, the applicant is wanting to rezone because he is wishing to build a triplex unit. This would allow, um, the, the R-two point five allows triplex, uh, units through the two and four family inclusion within that district. It does require seventy-five by one hundred foot lot dimension and this parcel would meet those minimum dimensions for the intended use. So with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
Uh, Mr. Killen, what is the current zoning of that property?
It's currently R-one.
It's currently R-one, what about the surrounding properties?
Um, in the staff report, uh, most of the properties surrounding that are R-one to the north. There's some R-three and to the south, there's also some R-three. We do have one, uh, R-two property that was rezoned recently in that same vicinity.
And the future land use?
Future land use is our complete neighborhood under our new comprehensive plan. And that allows for basically residential housing. And then along the, uh, the larger, uh, access points into the neighborhood, there could be some retail, uh, type structures for, uh, servicing the, the neighborhood. So in the packet, I did, at someone's suggestion, which I appreciated, uh, included a snapshot of what the complete neighborhood, uh, requirements will be once we get our land use regulations updated. That's on page forty-one. And you will see, um, basically it speaks to moderate density with housing types encouraged to accommodate a range of residents. So it could be anywhere from triplex units to single-family units or maybe even multifamily if the lot would allow it. But it is for moderate density, so that would be a component of that, uh, under the comprehensive guide.
But it does not include the current zoning methodology of trying to keep lack properties or adjacent properties or properties in the same area even zoned the same. So you have single-family residences, et cetera.
That's correct. The, the new comprehensive plan, plan brought us into more of a form-based code for the twenty fifty plan of the city. So instead of, it has to be strictly this type of housing, it, it encourages, um, an approach that allows it to, does the housing really accommodate or complement what's already in the area? And it's to, um, as you might have, obviously you're very much aware that we have, uh, kind of a, uh, I guess, affordable housing is becoming, uh, a bigger and bigger challenge for cities across the state. And this is so, uh, one way that a lot of cities are addressing it is to try to find a way to be a little more innovative in what they allow in residential areas, uh, to try to accommodate those shortages.
And we are in the beginning stages of implementing this twenty fifty plan. And so there probably will be some areas just like this one where it may be a, a challenge, at least initially for this particular property. But hopefully other properties will join and follow suit and, and it will, it will be a more uniform area. Maybe that's the way to say it.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me step in for just a second. Remember, R-two point five wasn't in existence when the city adopted its current land use regulations. So you won't find anywhere in the city that, you know, has a block of area that's all labeled R-two point five in current zoning or future land use. So every request we've had since we adopted that specific use would be more of a spot zoning application because there's, we, we decided to create the classification because we felt like there was a need for it. But then there's no designated area for R-two point five. So every request is going to be kind of this conver, conversation.
Yeah, great, great point, thank you, sir. Uh, R-two point five was actually maybe, um, very similar to what our comprehensive plan is encouraging now. It's just we, we had that on the books and as an approach to address, uh, these type of housing requests, um, before we even engaged the contract with Lionheart to discuss how to address the shortages in the, the future of our city.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Steve? Here are none. I will now open this into a public hearing, case number RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero one one. Uh, if there's anybody here to speak, uh, in favor or against the project. Seeing none, I will now bring us out of public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located nine six one Clinton Street.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, uh, I move that the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero dash two eight, which, which is an ordinance resoning the land described as single-family residence to integrated housing district, R-two point five be approved.
Motion for Gerald and a second from Leanne. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Applicant David Brumfield, this is case RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero one two. Applicant David Brumfield, representing Gray House Rentals LLC, is requesting a rezone at seven twenty-seven Frye. This is the Butler Edition Block Two, Lot Nine A. He is requesting a rezone from R-one to R-two, one and two family residential. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on September eighteenth and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. And just to provide a little background on the intent here, uh, there's an existing home on the property there wanting to convert that home to allow for a duplex-style housing. That will require a lot dimension of seventy-five by one hundred, uh, according to the R-two zoning. So if this rezone is approved, the applicant will have to go to the Board of Adjustment to request a variance for the lot dimensions. And we do have that application pending with the Board of Adjustment at this time, depending on, uh, the decision denied by city council. So with that, sir, be glad, glad to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions for Steve? Here are none, I will now open this up to a public hearing, case number RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero one two. Is there anyone to speak in favor or against this rezone? Seeing none, I will bring us out of the public hearing and consider approval for ordinance rezoning property located at seven two seven Frye.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion on case number RZ two zero two four S zero one two, property located on seven two seven Frye. It sets in section one, five, four, point oh five, point five, one, two, kind of residential district to be approved.
Second.
Leanne's got you every time. We got a motion from La, a second from Leanne. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you. Didn't take much time tonight.
No, sir.
Proud of you.
That was anticipated.
All right, move on to, uh, committee meetings. Uh, Gerald, if you would, with the Development Services Committee, please, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. The, uh, Development Services Committee met on September seventeenth. Uh, this is strictly a report, let you know that, uh, that, uh, we, uh, discussed the, uh, downtown historic district ordinances. And, uh, a decision was made to send this on to planning and zoning. Uh, since it is a land use, uh, issue, the vote was two to one, uh, to, uh, sign the ordinances guidelines to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. Uh, all the, uh, people affected in the area, uh, landowners or property owners will be notified. And, uh, then the, uh, P and Z will, will, uh, vote on that, send it back to the council. It will come back to the council in November. And, uh, then this council will have the option of, of, uh, approving that or not. Uh, and also the same thing goes with the guidelines, which the guidelines are really a part of, uh, the overall process, but are more particularly part of the council's, uh, review. And, uh, and also that's kind of the, the process right now. It's, uh, it's in a wait for the P and Z, which will be coming up, uh, October the fifteenth, I believe, is that not correct?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen. So, anyway, um, it establishes basically the guidelines and, and whatnot to preserve historic buildings in, uh, in the, basically the downtown area. This is not a new concept. It was, uh, it's, it's, there are probably sixty cities right now in, in Texas alone that have, uh, historic district overlays. And so, uh, that, uh, anyway, the, the committee voted two to one, uh, to, uh, send this on to planning and zoning. The process is a little bit more difficult now than it used to be, simply because the state legislature has made it more difficult now. And good, bad, or indifferent, that's just the way it is. So we go through this process in order to do it. Uh, so we've taken that first step, now we go to the second step, pretty soon we're going to go to the third step and et cetera, et cetera. The second thing that, uh, the committee reviewed was, uh, a proposed ordinance, uh, revisions relating to, uh, limiting the number of, or actually raising the limitation on the number of people, of unrelated persons, uh, that could occupy residential structure. We have had, uh, that at three people unrelated. Uh, and, uh, staff has recommended that that be changed to four in all the residential areas, zoning areas that we have. And, uh, the, uh, the committee reviewed that and by action of three to, uh, three to zero, opted to assign the ordinance to planning and zoning, also, uh, for public hearing and subsequent recommendation to the full council. This will probably come back in November the fifth or thereabouts, also, uh, back to this council for a final review. And that's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. No action is needed today on, on those, uh, like committee reports. So move on to, uh, Monica for the financial report.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, council, this is the, uh, we reviewed the financial statements ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's eleven months into our fiscal year and, uh, the financial indicators are, as we would expect, are a little bit better. For our property tax, we received twenty-five thousand in the month of August. That's two hundred and eighty-nine thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're, um, one percent over our budget and that's about a hundred and fourteen thousand more than we anticipated. For sales tax, we, we received, um, eight hundred and seven thousand in August. And that's two hundred and thirteen thousand or two point five percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're at ninety-four percent of our budget and that's about four hundred and fifty-six thousand higher than anticipated. Of the forty-two million dollars revenue received to date, fifty-four percent was received in the general fund, twenty-seven percent was received in the water and wastewater fund, seven percent received in our capital projects fund and four percent was received in the landfill fund. We received ninety-eight percent of our total budgeted revenues through August. That's about two point two million more than anticipated. That's due to taxes intergovernmental in our interest income. We received eight hundred and twenty-three thousand less revenue through August than last fiscal year to date. And again, that's due to, um, debt proceeds that we received last year that was non-repeating this year. Of the fifty-one million, um, spent to date, forty-seven percent was expended in the water and wastewater fund. Forty percent was expended in our general fund, four percent was expended in our capital projects fund and two percent was expended in the debt service fund, stormwater drainage fund, airport fund and the landfill fund. Um, we've expended sixty-six percent of our total budget expenditures through August. That's twenty million less than anticipated and that's due to, um, savings and personnel, contractual, um, capital outlay and some transfers. We've spent four point four million less in expenditures through August than last fiscal year to date and that's, um, a lot due to capital outlay. CEDIS received an overall one hundred percent of their budgeted revenue, which is twenty-five thousand more than last fiscal year to date and eighty-three thousand more than anticipated, um, obviously due to their only two sources of revenue, which is taxes and interest income. CEDIS spent an overall thirty-four percent of their budgeted expenditures through August. Um, that's two hundred and nine thousand less than last fiscal year to date and that's due to grant, grant disbursements and nine hundred and eighty thousand less than, um, anticipated and that's due to capital outlay and grant, and grant disbursements.
Any questions for Monica?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a first from, or a motion from Mattie and a second from Brandon. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Comments by the city major?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council, uh, in case anybody noticed, last weekend, we had a massive amount of visitors to the community. But it was an outstanding weekend at Stephen Mill with, uh, Family Weekend up at Tarleton and then our TRCA rodeo, uh, weekend, which was, uh, a fantastic success. And then next week, we're going to have a bunch of people coming back to town again, uh, because that starts Tarleton Homecoming Week. Uh, so that'll be all, uh, starting next week and throughout that week, uh, culminating on Saturday night. And then this Saturday will be our last farmer's market, uh, until next spring. So this is your last opportunity, uh, to come downtown. And, uh, Mr. Brown and his crew have been doing an outstanding job with that. And I think it's the last one, we had the largest amount of vendors that we've ever had, so I would anticipate that again. So, uh, come out Saturday morning.
Yes, sir. Our comments from the council, Ms. Hurfee?
Well, Jason stole a part of mine. I just wanted to remind everybody about the farmer's market and that will also include coffee and cars and live music. And then, um, I checked with some people that would know that we had over seven hundred competitors at the rodeo last weekend. Or kind of went through the whole week. So I would just like to congratulate. So, I would just like to congratulate the rodeo committee and all of the wonderful ladies that put on the show last week. They raised lots of money, and if you haven't been to the arena, please go, it's, it's a great thing. And then, I also would, she's not here tonight, but I would like to welcome our new tourism manager, her name is Ally Whitworth. And hopefully, she'll be here at the next meeting, and we're excited to have her. She has a great background in tourism, and, so, look forward to everyone meeting her. So, that's all I got.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, David, the, it was nice to see the huge crowd we had here. It probably was not something that they all particularly liked, but anyway, it was, it was nice to see the huge crowd here today. Because we anticipated that there was going to be a major decision made, one way or the other, with regard to development here in town. The owner of that development chose to withdraw. Just so everyone would know, this won't be the last time. There will be more developments in the future. There will be, as a matter of fact, there's several on the drawing boards right now, in some form or fashion of planning. So we're going to see more of those in the community, and why, it's because the town is growing. And that's a good thing for us as a community, that's not a bad thing. It's how we grow, and, and what we do to make sure that it is well-planned in the future. That's part of the comprehensive plan that Steve was referring to, that's a part of the process that we go through here. It's part of the planning and zoning process, and, and so forth. So, we'll see a lot more of that in the future, be aware of that, and realize that the people up here on the council are more than glad to have letters, and calls, and, and notices from people, and, and everything. And we take those into consideration and realize, too, that we're representing 20,000 or so much people out here in this community. And we don't all agree, but hopefully, everybody will agree that we're trying to do the best for the entire community. And, and I think so far, it looks pretty good right now. So, anyway, that's what I got to say, that's my, I get off my soapbox. But thank you, and we've had a wonderful weekend, last weekend, just to, to emphasize what Jason and Leanne have said. And we got a big one coming up, and, and everything, but I tell you what, it's really nice still, I think, to see that we should name our official city bird as the construction crane. We still have those around, and it's, it's kind of interesting and kind of amazing that, that we look around and see those. But everything is coming together, and it looks good. Okay, thank you.
Coach?
Mayor Pro Tem, I want to commend Darren Trussell on, on everything that's going down at the park right now. We've got flag football, we have baseball games, but everywhere I go down there, because I have a couple grandchildren that are playing, I hear nothing but compliments on our field. Our fields are in great shape down there, we're not playing in sticker land anymore. You know, I mean, it's just nice to hear people commenting on how, how nice it is to go down there. The only thing he's done a poor job of is keeping the mosquitoes away from people, but I don't know what he can do about that. But it's, I want to commend the park, it's really been a pleasure to see the kids play and enjoy it, and have the, have the field, the fields in the condition they are. And I know that takes a lot of work, because I've been around that my whole life, and I want to commend it for that.
Excellent. Ms. Park?
Thank you for the fire department, for the event they put on this afternoon. Also, to kind of mirror what Councilman Cook said, I love to see the people in this community get involved and speak up and let their voice be heard for years. That's, the key thing that I've heard from most people is they feel like they have no voice. And that was proved tonight, that that's not right, that it's not real, you can come here, every voice be heard, Ms. Wesson has let us hear her voice several times. But it's, it's nice to get feedback from the city, whether it's positive or negative, to hear from people on a regular basis. Also, Saturday morning, we were getting ready to, the sheriff's boss, he was going to be in the rodeo parade, and Darren, I heard so many compliments about the city park, the shape it's in, the changes that have been made. It looks better than I've seen it in my lifetime, and we moved here in '72 or '73, so kudos to you and your group. That's what I have.
Ms. Smith?
First, I want to congratulate Cameron Arndt on being named the past male athlete of the year. That's pretty awesome for a nine or 10-year-old boy. Great things from him coming in the future. Also, want to make an announcement, the SPAR youth basketball sign-ups are still underway until, on, until Friday, October 4th, and you can apply online. I am 100% against premature Christmas decorating, but I am not against premature Christmas toy drives for the youth. On November 2nd, the Stevensville Men's Golf Association is holding their 12th Annual Toys for Kids Toy Drive and Golf Tournament. You can contact Legends Country Club for signup information, but the entry fee is $30 and a $25 unwrapped toy, and all those proceeds go to the youth of E Rath County, so that everybody has a great Christmas. It's something that my husband and I are very passionate in, and I just wanted to pass that along to you guys. And also want to thank the teachers, not only of Stevieville, but of E Rath County as well, so, thank you all.
Ms. Greenall?
I'd like to express my gratitude for the large crowd that showed up, and like the other people said, it'd be great if we saw that kind of crowd every week. And also, being married to a teacher, I need to speak up for the, for the teachers and appreciate our appreciation of them with the declaration for them today.
Ms. Nix?
First, I want to tell you what an excellent job you did at running the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, they just vote to let you run it instead of the mayor, but, but thank you. I also appreciate the teachers, my, my wife's retired, 37 years of service. I, I think, I'm going to tell you I'm prejudiced, but I think she was an excellent teacher. But it's nice that we can do some formal recognition for them, because it is, I'm going to consider it as an underappreciated job, and for most of them, it's a calling. It, it's not for the money, they love the kids, they want to instill the, the good things in them, and that's why they're there, and it's, it's nice to recognize them, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Alright, I am actually going to say a couple things. I want to also tell everyone I appreciate the, the large crowd we had today. It's great to see people coming out to hear their voices, to see their voices in action. And I wish we could get those crowds in here every, every two weeks where, when we meet. It would be great to see those faces and everybody else's faces in our community more often. Also, I would like to mention that the Waste Connections Golf Tournament is, is October 14th?
Coming up.
Coming up, we, they're still looking for teams and hole sponsors. The, the Waste Connections Group donate their proceeds for our all-inclusive playground. So that is a very important fundraiser for our city. And I would encourage anyone to get with Mr. Trussell over there, who we'd be more than happy to sign you up for a team or a hole sponsorship. That being said, it is 6:37, and I will adjourn this Stevieville City Council meeting, thank you very much.